Okay, good evening, everyone. We will call to order the public hearing scheduled for 5:45 for the purpose of soliciting public input with respect to a capital appropriation and bond authorization for school rooftop solar photovoltaic projects as five Waterbury Public Schools as submitted by Michael Le Blanc, Director of Finance. If you wish to address this board, I ask that you sign up with our City Sheriff Steve Conway. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have a five-minute time limit, and I will give you one-minute warning. Mr. Conway.
First speaker tonight from 1400 Meriden Road, Martin Spring.
The lady wanted to sign up for the public hearing. I didn't want to jump in front of her. I guess she...well, anyways, I'm here, so I'm going to speak. Okay, on a public hearing for a purpose of soliciting public input and respect to capital appropriation and bond authorization...
Excuse me, just your name and address.
Oh, Martin Spring, 1400 Meriden Road. Apologize. Okay, for the purpose of capital appreciation and authorization, the school rooftop solar for projects in five schools, public schools in Waterbury is submitted by Michael Le Blanc, Director of Finance. I ask that you guys approve this, but I wanted to know if we can keep the costs under budget if possible. Having solar panels on the roofs will be a big savings for the city considering our electric rates are through the roof. And I think in the long run it will help save a lot of money. But, you know, to be more specific, I didn't know if these were going to be for grammar schools, schools, or middle schools. It doesn't say anything on this about where they're going to go and how they're going to achieve this. But I think this is something that...this is long overdue. I know I've been...I'm a big advocate for solar panels and solar stuff. I mean, I got a lot of solar stuff in my house, and I got solar lights on my porch and everything, and, you know, it does save a lot of money. So I think if the city can do this, and we can all work together on a good project like this, I think that would be great. I know that we had some people to come in, some specialists that came in to the Waterville Community Club, I think it was last year, where we have our meetings at the old Waterville Firehouse in Thompson Avenue. And they came in and they talked to us about solar panels, where they could put them on the roof, or they could put them on the ground. I think up at the old...up there on Industrial Lane, they got them in the ground up there where they used to have the old dump up there. And I hear they're working pretty well. And I don't know if we're tapping off those resources or not, but I think it's something that we should look at. And as long as it's not too expensive, and I know Mike Le Blanc's always got the taxpayers in mind, and I appreciate that when he's doing things, and I know he's very thorough. But the thing is, I think we should look at what we're going to do with these solar panels. And by the way, people say there's an environmental impact on them too when you want to get rid of them, when they're outdated, and there's no place to get rid of them or something. Because the gentleman that came before the Waterville Community Club, I believe Mr. Savio might have been there at that meeting, and a few, I think Mary Grace was there, and also Kelly. And I'm not saying to be disrespectful to other members of the Board of Aldermen, but I also know the mayor at the time was on the Board of Aldermen, and I believe he came too. But the thing is, this is something that we have to be concerned about, you know, what are we going to do with the waste when they're not useful? We're going to put them in a landfill? Where are we going to put them? How are we going to get rid of them, you know? And I think it's something we should look at in the future. But again, this is going to save the city an awful lot of money in the long run. I think it's something...it's a win-win-win situation. And I was hoping to be more people here to speak on this because I think this is vitally important that we all participate and get involved in our government, and especially when it comes to things like the solar panels and things like that. Because as you guys noted, I've been a big advocate for that, for Thompson Avenue, and going around and with the lights and everything. So, and I maybe...because I was talking to a gentleman on Board of Aldermen, I didn't want to embarrass him, but my daughter, where she lives in Georgia, they...in the small little county, they have a lot of them down there for the municipal buildings. And it's working out really well, ladies and gentlemen. They're saving an awful lot of money. And if we say money, you guys say money. And then everybody's happy. The taxpayers are happy, the politicians are happy, everybody's happy, you know? Because this is something we should look at. We're going into the year 2024, and 2025 in about five months or four months, and, you know, and so we should look into the future of making things right for the people, especially here in the city of Waterbury. But again, you know, I don't want to take up too much time, but I just want to say this is something that I think it should be approved, and I want to thank everybody's effort and valid effort, if you will, for participating in this. And I hopefully, in the future, you're going to get somebody in here giving us a good presentation about solar panels, the good things for the city, or how the use of the solar panels, or the things that are not so good for the solar panels. So I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Next speaker from 83 Mildred Avenue, Isa Alves.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marissa Alvarez Alvez. I go by Isa Alvez, and I wanted to speak to you today about the benefits of solar. So I'd like to speak to you from a position of strength. My family and I have had solar for the past seven years. I brought my bills, okay? I brought times in the winter, and I would just like to share it with you. And, you know, anyone who is interested, please let me know, and I can provide you with this information. So the first thing I want to tell you is that this is the future. I'm going to share with you a real-life example at 83 Mildred Avenue. So I can't imagine what these solar panels are going to do for our city and for our schools, not only showing our kids that we are for the future, we're using renewables, and this is our commitment to our city. So I wanted to show you, this is our bill from August 16th, right? Everybody's crying Bloody Mary for what's happening. Eight dollars and sixty-six cents. That is our sole...that is our ever-source bill, okay? Now, obviously, we have a solar company that we bought the solar panels through, and that commitment is $129 a month, that you can pay off at any time, okay? So our system, it says, "Congratulations, your system is an overachiever. Your system performed 1,122 kilowatt-hours higher than the guaranteed amount." So overall, the actual production was 10,500 kilowatts. What does that mean? In today's dollars, at 29 cents, whatever source is charging, our yearly bill would be $3,046. Divided by 12, just to average it out, that's $253. Again, this is one home. So if you subtract the $129, you're looking at $123 savings seven years later. So if you're thinking about the future and thinking about saving the city some money and doing the right thing, solar is the way. I also want to show you, it's a whole mathematical equation. How many panels can you fit on a roof? How much electricity is the school going to use? We can use residential calculators, figure all that out. And sometimes in the winter months, when you're using a lot of electricity, and the system hasn't produced enough over the summers, right? We have a lot of cloudy days, like we did this past summer. So sometimes you could have a bill, a month or two where you have a bill. But in this bill, it shows you what the solar system produced, even in the winter, even when they're covered in snow, right? It still produces. So again, I have all this information here for you to see. I'm very excited and proud that the city is even considering this. Connecticut has a very lofty goal to have solar because it's going to save our environment, it's going to take a lot of the strain off of the power lines. And if we're building new buildings, if we have the capacity to put these panels on roofs, let's take advantage and do it. I also have here that I can show you, I have like a five-year trajectory. So again, this is a whole mathematical equation. It's a belter, right? The winter months, you don't produce as much. In the summertime, you overproduce, and a lot of times that carries you into your winters. Okay? Like I said, we're very excited about going solar, and anything that we can do to help move people along, like I said, I will present my bills and show you whatever you need to see so that we can keep moving this forward. Thank you.
Next speaker from 413 Harpers Ferry Road, Paul Condes.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Paul Condes, and I still reside at 413 Harpers Ferry Road. I believe this project is a good project for the city. It's a proven fact that solar is working in the country, and I think this is something you should support. Thank you.
That's the last speaker, Mr. President.
Okay. With that, we will close this public hearing, and we'll start our regular meeting at the Board of Aldermen at 6 o'clock. Okay. We will call to order the regular meeting at the Board of Aldermen for Monday, September 23rd, 2024. If everyone will please rise for the Pledge Allegiance in a silent prayer.
Alderman Alves.
Present.
Alderwoman Caballo.
Present.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Hunter.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Mosley.
Present.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Nujang.
Right.
Alderman Rinaldi.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Taladine.
Present.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Here.
Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Here.
Alderman D.G. Ovencarlo.
Here.
14 present, one absent.
Okay, we have a quorum. The next item on our agenda would be public speaking. If you wish to address this board, I ask that you sign up with our City Sheriff Steve Conway. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have a five-minute time limit, and I will give you one-minute warning. Mr. Conway.
First speaker tonight from 1400 Meriden Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Meriden Road. Like I said, I was a big advocate, and I still am, for the solar panels, and I was really hoping the city would take in consideration, you know, we had a public hearing on that. But this lady just said, came out with a lot of good information, that I never even knew it existed like that, and I have to let you guys know that. And Mr. Condes was also supportive of it. I was only hoping there'd be more people here tonight to speak about that. But I did want to say on your agenda, which is dated today, and that's September 23rd, 2024, you know, you have a lot of items on the agenda, so I won't have time to go through every one. So on the Board of Aldermen's agenda items, 1, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 22, 23, 24. I recommend to approve, but as a Waterbury taxpayer, I would appreciate it very kindly if you can keep the cost down if possible. Remember, it's us the taxpayer who flips the bill at the end of the day. So let's stay vigilant. And, you know, there's a lot of things on here. Like I said, this is very important, what's going on in the city of Waterbury, especially with the bond, the bond rating, and the way things are going with the, you know, with the way things have been with, you know, so many things happening, and with the huge massive deficit that we have nationwide, and, you know, maybe we're going to have problems down the road. So this is why I was hoping you guys could stay vigilant because we got to, you know, watch every penny we spend. Another thing I want to say, let's all help celebrate Waterbury's 315th anniversary. It's going to be on a Green Friday. Saturday concludes with the gathering at Library Park. Remember, parade starts at 11 o'clock a.m. My guys will be there, we'll be marching, and I know others will be here marching too. So many thanks goes out to the mayor and his staff, and let's not forget John Murray from The Observer to Waterbury. And hopefully, the weather will be great. So let's get involved, and don't be shy. Be proud of our fair city and its accomplishments from 1674 to the present. So, you know, I really don't have much else to say, but again, there's so many different items on the agenda over here. And there's another one over here as far as the Board of Education and requesting approval. Subject Board of Ed anticipated approval, regular meeting, and agreement of the following agencies for sub-guaranteed services under the schools, and that would be Catholic Charities, Community Children's Community, Children's Village, Easter Seals, North Guteck Valley C.C., and the Moore Team, and so many other things here. So I know there's an awful lot of things that are going to happen, and I do appreciate that. And so I also did, I know that I was talking to Dave Simpson over here, and I got to find that part that I was talking to him about. I'm sorry about that, but I wasn't ready to even speak on that. Okay. And number 19, requesting approval contracted on court havoc, and that's for air conditions for the city of Waterbury. And I think that's something that we should look at in the future, and that's something we should pass. And also, last on the agenda, with Michael Le Blanc, capital appropriation for the authorization and bond authorization for school rooftop solar panels, and with five Waterbury Public Schools. As I said before, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen on the Board of Aldermen, nobody really specified what schools are going to go to. I know they got to go into the grammar schools and the high schools, maybe a couple of high schools, the middle schools, but nevertheless, I think it's something that would be very important. Another thing that I don't understand, because we don't always have to put everything on the roof. This is what I was going to say before, and I appreciate your indulgence. I know I've seen panels put on the lawn, on people's property, on the ground, and maybe put it with a post or something up in the air, and that's something we could think about in the future. Because as the lady said here, you know, this is for the future and beyond. And so this is something we should really think about, you know, what's happening with the state and everything, and the high cost of energy, and because I know...
One minute.
Thank you, sir. My house is all electricity, as I was telling this lady. And I live in a condo, but, you know, it's very, very expensive, and we hardly ever use any fans or anything. Matter of fact, I didn't even use any air conditioning all year long, you know? I thought it was in my war suit over here, you know? It was so damn hot in the house. But the thing is, you know, we got to pay attention to what's going on, and, you know, really capitalize on it with a lot of emphasis, that we got to really try to save the taxpayers' money in any way, fashion, or form that we can, and I thank you for your time.
Next speaker from 11 Oak Street, Reginald Toodle.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Reggie Toodle, and I live at 11 Oak Street. Reason I'm here is because all of a sudden I'm getting quite a bit of water in my backyard. I don't know where it's coming from. I'm on Oak Street, which is the beginning of Long Hill, and this year, I've had water practically all since last winter. And we had a few snowstorms, and the driveway is covered with water now. I don't know if they've been working up on, I think it's Beach Street that's up higher, or where this water is coming from, but it was never there before. And I'm looking for some help on finding out why, or someone doing something about it to stop it from coming on my property. Because the backyards, I have dug trenches on the left and right side of the house to prevent it from going into my basement, but I don't know how long that's going to last. So maybe this city, or the water department, someone. There's no leaking pipes. The water seems to be good water. It doesn't have a smell or anything, but it never stops running. There's water running down my driveway today. It hasn't rained in quite a few days. And it's constantly doing that. I don't know what to do about it. I won't help. So if there's someone you can direct me to, or something you can think about?
So just to let you know, during public speaking, we're not...we don't usually talk back to you, so I'll answer your questions, but we have made note of it, and we'll let the city agencies know, just so we don't make you think we're being rude. But in public speaking, we don't speak back to you, just if, in case it's your first time speaking. So we are making note of it, and we will have somebody definitely get in touch with you, but please continue.
Well, there isn't much more to say. I just need help.
All right.
So I'll be waiting to hear from you, or should I come to the next meeting?
No, sir. Just do me a favor with the City Sheriff, if you can leave your phone number also, whatever. Oh, you got it? Okay. That's all you need to do, and we'll have somebody reach out to you.
Okay. Thanks for everything.
All right. Thank you.
Next speaker from 83 Mildred Avenue, Marissa Alvarez.
I'm back. I forgot a few things. So I...
So just sorry, you have to just say a name and address again. I'm sorry, just for the record. Yep, thank you.
Marissa Alvarez Alvez, 83 Mildred Avenue. Good evening, Aldermen and Board of Directors and everyone who's here. I just wanted to say that, again, I am for solar. My husband and I represent the company QA Marketing, and we are not only end-users, but we are also in the industry of solar. And I'm sure a lot of people have a lot of questions, and again, I had offered all my information, and really, my husband is the expert. He isn't here this evening because he is not feeling well. But I forgot to share a couple of additional things with you. In terms of the solar system generating kilowatts, when you receive your ever-source bill, it actually tells you how many kilowatts the system produced, what you used, and what you're going to carry forward to the following month. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands that there's an entire calculation, everything that goes into this, and if you are not for this, please get the information before you make a decision against it. I also wanted to share that it is possible to get a negative bill. Here is negative $36 for 83 Mildred Avenue. Thirty-six negative, so that means it was credited. And what happens is, in the month of March, there's something called the true-up. So what happens is, the electric company squares off with you. So if you have a lot of carryover, they're going to, you know, square up with you, and now the spring, we're going to start up again, and you're going to build your bank and move forward. So I thought that was very important to talk about because, again, sometimes if we don't understand something, we're just not for it. There are warranties and guarantees. If there's leaks in the roof, if anything happens, you just need to get all the information so that you're covered under all the warranties and guarantees. And again, I am just an end-user. My husband is the expert in this. I do have information here, but if you want any further information, please contact us. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Okay. Thank you. There are no minutes to approve. So with that, before we start the agenda, a few housekeeping items. Item number 19 and 20. On Section 10, on both those items, the contract bonds were not applicable. That language has changed. You, I believe, were emailed the new language, and had also given the copies right in front of you, and you had the copies on your desk. The new language for Section 10 and Item 19 reads, "Contract bonds. In the city's sole discretion, the city may elect to require the contractor to furnish to the cities a performance bond or payment bond, or both. Each bond written for a penal sum equaling the total compensation amount of each task order in a form and with a surety acceptable to the city. If the city elects to require such bonds, the city shall..." If the city elects to require such bonds, the city shall include such requirement in any task order for which such bonds will be required by the city. The contractor shall then furnish to the city an required bond prior to the issuance of the corresponding purchase order by the city. The bond shall continue in effect for the greater of the warranty period set for section seven of this contract, or 365 calendar days after city delivers its written notice of its acceptance of all projects identified in any fully executed task order." So, on item 19, you have the new language. Just make note that when you vote on item 19 tonight, you are voting on the whole item with the new language changed. For item 20, old, section 10, again read, "Contract bonds not applicable." Item 10 now reads, "That contract bonds in the city's sole discretion, the city may elect to require the contractor to furnish to the city a performance bond or payment bond, or both. Each bond written for a penal sum equalling the total compensation amount of each task order in a form and with surety acceptable to the city. If the city elects to require such bonds, the city shall include such requirement in any task order for which such bonds will be required by the city. The contractor shall, shall then furnish to the city any required bond prior to the issuance of the corresponding purchase order by the city. The bond shall continue in effect for the greater of the warranty period set forth in section seven of this contract, or 365 calendar days after city delivers its written notice of its acceptance of all projects identified in any fully executed task order." So, that also in item number 20, you are voting on that new language when you vote on the entire item number 20. And with that, item 25 you have in front of you, it's the Mayor Pernuiski's intention to fill the restricted and unrestricted appointments to the boards and commissions. It will be received and placed on file. With that, Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 25 to the agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Second.
First, a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and item 25 is added to the agenda. Okay, and with that, before we recess into committees, we are going to take up old, excuse me, unfinished item number one as a committee of the whole. So, with that, Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to reserve ourselves into a committee of the whole?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries. We are sitting as a committee of the whole. Unfinished business item number one, is the approval of the capital appropriation and bond authorization and bond authorization for school rooftop solar photovoltaic projects at five Waterbury Public Schools, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Is there a motion to approve unfinished business item number one?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Elsaff?
I'd like to know that when we go out for RFAs and stuff, that we get some guarantee of performance, both in productivity and in service, and what it's going to cost us if we have to service these panels and stuff, whether we own them, lease them, rent them. I personally have had a little trouble with service on the company I use, so I am concerned.
Good evening. Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. I think I'll let Rob Clea with CSW, our consultant, take that. They will be assisting us in WDC in developing the specifications that will go out in the RFP for hiring a contractor to install the solar panels.
Hi, Robert Clea, and with me, Alan Savins, and we are the city's Clean Energy Consultants, and thank you to the President and to the board for having us here tonight. I think we'll address the, some of your, the latter part of your questions. First of all, because these school rooftop solar arrays are going to be funded by the Office of School Construction, the DAS program, with 79% reimbursement plus 21% reimbursement from the federal government, to the tune of you will have them fully paid for, they have to be owned by the city. So, they will be the city's owned assets. And for that reason, those five school solar arrays will require routine maintenance over the course of their 28-year lifetime, and what Mike LeBlanc just mentioned is, that is suited for an RFP for those types of services. And my colleague Alan could fill in as well. There are lots of solar companies out there who perform that daily sort of monitoring of the performance, so ensuring that they will have remote sensing of the solar arrays, knowing exactly how much they're producing, and be able to notice if a certain number of panels go out or stop producing, and the ability to mobilize people to come and fix any problems that would arise in that near term. Plus, they will be doing annual sort of maintenance inspections to ensure that they're operating at peak performance. Alan and his team are the more technical side. I would defer to him if there are things I missed there.
Hello. I would just add to that, the DAS, the state agency, does not allow the contractor that would be performing the maintenance requirements.
Excuse me, sir. Just, just your name for the record, sorry.
Alan Savins. The state agency, DAS, requires that there be a separate RFP process for that contractor. There would be a separate process once the projects are complete, that would go out and source the contractor that would maintain the projects.
Okay. Are these going to be set up with battery systems, or are these going to be strictly, what we don't use goes right back to Eversource?
Exactly right. No batteries.
Thank you.
Alderman, gentlemen.
Thanks for recognizing me. So, I don't know if this is a question for Tom, or are you guys? I'm just going to kind of not foot around what I'm trying to ask. So, these gentlemen here are consultants that we're hiring to do what? Because I thought they were from the solar company. Yeah, I can ask you guys too. I just didn't know, like, where the appropriate person was. So, I thought we were working with the solar company, but these gentlemen are consultants that are helping us do the drawings for the solar that are going to go on the schools?
Tommy at WDC, essentially, they're helping us with everything. So, it's not like anyone can go out and just submit applications into the Ed and Res Program. They help us with the RFP process to ensure that when we're going out to bid, what the, what the solar companies and others are telling us is accurate. This is a common practice throughout municipalities across the state. Actually, Nogatuck started doing this several years ago, and it is something we've essentially copied from them. They can tell you everything that they do, but essentially, they're, they're here to make sure that these projects are moving and that the city's getting the best bang for their buck on them.
Okay. And then, is anyone from Eversource? No, right? Okay.
Eversource-
I'm just trying to clear things up.
The program you apply into is run by Eversource.
Okay. All right, because I'm a huge fan of solar. Like, I, I do want to move forward as a city, but I just find it, I don't know one person, and nine out of 10 people I know have solar, who hasn't had an issue with their panels. So, when we talk about a 20-year lifetime and owning these, that kind of makes me a little timid and weary, because when you have it leased out, bing, bang, call the phone, someone's up there fixing or telling you a efficiency gap on each panel. So, maybe you gentlemen can help me understand why we're, I guess we can't lease them, right? Because we're trying to get the funding back from these grants? Is that why?
Right. So, the state program does not allow third-party ownership. They only allow direct ownership. So, the 79% reimbursement from the state would only be applicable in directly owned projects.
So, what happens when these, how do we know when they're not producing what we do? Is it like a privately owned thing, where we can look it up on a computer system and it tells us which ones aren't working?
So, exactly what I just mentioned. So, what we'll do is, we'll go out for a separate RFP to find a contractor that will maintain the projects on behalf of Waterbury. In addition to that, there will be, and we will require this of the contractor that builds the projects, to put kiosks, monitors in the main lobbies of each school. So, there will be a visual representation of the production of each project, number one. So, everyone will see it. So, if a student sees that there's an issue, not that it should get to that level, but there is that level of visibility. In addition, there will be login access for the city of Waterbury to see its project. In addition to that, the contractor will have visibility into the production of the system, and the alerts that may happen, they'll see it first, and they will come and service the project on behalf of Waterbury.
Okay. So, we're going to buy from Company A, and then we're going to have a contractor not from Company A overseeing this? Is that how?
It may be Company A that also performs the service of the projects, but we need to separate the process due to the state requirements, and we also want to, want to introduce competitiveness to ensure that if Company A offers that service, that they're offering it at the best rate for Waterbury. So, we'll ask them to absolutely participate in that opportunity, but it will be a competitive environment for them.
Great. And are they warranted? Like, if I buy my car rather than lease it, I have a warranty. Is there a warranty package we can get with these?
So, each product has its own standard warranty. There will also be a workmanship warranty for the contractor that builds the project.
And what does that normally look like? How many years is it?
Which, product or workmanship or both?
Product. I guess both, if you know it.
Modules, 20 years, inverters have the ability up to 20 years, racking is typically 15 to 20 years. So, those are the three primary workforces of the project. And then, a workmanship warranty is generally anywhere between one and five years.
And do we have new roofs on these schools?
We specifically picked roofs that were less than two years old.
Okay.
So, one sort of on, a little bit older than that, but not much.
And are school roofs last about 20 years? I don't know the school roofing.
So, we're, we work in concert with DAS, who is the primary funder or reimbesser of the roof projects, which is why we pick roofs that are of a certain age, because they don't want to have solar on top of something that ultimately needs to be replaced before the 20 years are up.
Okay. I'm just looking at my phone, because people had sent me questions to ask you.
Totally fine.
I think that's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Alderman Elsaff?
Will these panels have individual inverters, or are you going to do a bank inverter?
No. The goal would, would be to have what's called module-level power electronics, which are individual optimizers on the back of each module, so that in the event there's cloud cover or shade, the individual module is still performing and not relying on the rest.
That's why I'm asking the question, because you put 20, 40, 50, and one breaks, and they're all dead, they're useless. That's, that's why I wanted to make sure that we had the capacity to continue to generate.
You got it.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the capital bond appropriation, bond authorization, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and unfinished business item number one is approved. With that, Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to return to, back to the regular order of business?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we return to the regular order of business. And with that, we will be recessing into committees. We will start with the Finance Committee.
I call the Finance Committee to order number, item number six. I just wanted to note that Alderman Mosley needed to recuse himself because of his relationship with one of the organizations. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a budget transfer from capital improvement and other funds for FY '24 within the city's general fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $3,825,000, as submitted by Sarah R. Gary, Manager of Budget Development and Oversight. May I have a, a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
Second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Item number seven. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a budget transfer from Water Department Capital Improvement Fund, FY '24, within the city's Water Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $1,020,647, as submitted by Sarah R. Gary, Manager of Budget and Budget Development and Oversight. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the transfer is read.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item, item number eight. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a budget transfer from Water Pollution Control Capital Improvement Fund, FY '24, within the city's Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $1,078,996, as submitted by Sarah R. Gary, Manager of Budget Development and Oversight. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the transfer.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passed. Item number nine. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a budget transfer from Water and Water Pollution Control Capital Improvement Funds, FY '24, within the city's Utility Administration Division Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $240,168, as submitted by Sarah R. Gary, Manager of Budget Development and Oversight. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the transfer.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. The Standing Committee, Tax Overpayments. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $9,638.49, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso Jr., CC, MC, Revenue Collection Manager. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the refunds is read.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All those who are in favor of adjournment, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned.
I call to order the Intergovernmental Committee, and all the items for our Board of Ed agenda were approved at Thursday's meeting. Item number one. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a construction contract for the traffic signal reimaging program between the city of Waterbury and Superior Electric LLC in the amount of $254,500, as submitted by Roy E. Kavanaugh, PE, City Engineer, Engineering Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. The motion passes. Item number two. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman set a public hearing on October 21st, 5:45 PM in these chambers for the purpose of receiving public input regarding proposed amendments to Section 32.16 of the Waterbury Code of Ordinances related to the abatement of taxes for low and moderate income housing and for the Board of Alderman to take action upon the proposed amendment at their meeting on said date as submitted by Paul K. Peranuski, Jr., Mayor, City of Waterbury. Can I get a motion to set the public hearing?
Motion to set the public hearing.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The public hearing is set for October 21st, 5:45 PM. Item number three. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the first supplemental project authorization letter between the City of Waterbury and the Connecticut Department of Transportation for the realignment of the Walnut Street, East Farm Street, North Walnut Street intersection as submitted by Roy E. Kavanaugh, PE, City Engineer, Engineering Department. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 10. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an amendment to the professional services agreement feasibility study at St. Lucy's for a community health center between the City of Waterbury and Friar Architecture, Inc. The Health Department requests that the contract be extended to 6/30/2025 as submitted by Ashling McGuckman, Director of Health, Department of Public Health. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Thanks for recognizing me. How are you? I feel like it was eons ago when we voted to buy this piece of property. Do you remember what year it was? Was it two years ago that we bought St. Lucy's?
Twenty-three.
Maybe more.
I believe it was in 23. I believe it was about 18 months ago.
Okay. So what is, can you tell me what our timing looks like for this project? I guess to finish? Because my next question is kind of where does it fit into the budget?
So it's difficult to estimate a timeline at this time. Two of the funding applications we submitted were not approved. We didn't get funding for an application we made for congressionally directed spending of $10 million. And we did get $5 million from that fund the previous year, we just didn't get it the second year. So where the estimate of the cost for the build is about 16 million, we have about $5 million of that. As a result, I think we need to extend the contract to make sure that we have funds in place to be able to do this in a phased process. So get started with what we can do with $5 million, understanding that we're continuing to seek funding to make up the deficit that remains.
Can we make the build, building usable with $5 million if it's a $16 million project?
I think we'll have to look at the, the plans that we've developed and probably just parse them out in stages to make realistic improvements piece by piece rather than sort of going for the full build out that we originally envisioned.
Okay.
But we do seek additional funds at every opportunity. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 11. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the letter of agreement between EverSource Energy and the City of Waterbury for energy efficiency measures at the city's water pollution control facility as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I have a question, Director LeBlanc.
Good evening.
Good evening. Could you explain what are we, what are the measures we were hoping to get or what kinds of energy efficiency? Because I didn't see, I saw that they were low or no cost measures, but do we have any finer detail on what they're supposed to be?
I think, Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance, you pretty much covered it. This is just the equivalent of a $5,000 grant to incentivize, you know, taking a look at, at low hanging fruit strategic energy measures. My guess would be, you know, it could all encompass a walkthrough of the facility, seeing where there's opportunities maybe to make sure, um, uh, energy consumption is, is, uh, controlled as much as it can be. As simple as, it could be, you know, educating personnel, employees where in the event that you don't have light sensors that turn off the lights when there's nobody in the office that they're reminded that, you know, at the end of the day, you know, turn off your light when you're leaving your office type of thing. So it's, uh, I, I think this is just a, a, you know, the, the folks over at WPC in combination with the representatives from Jacobs, um, they, uh, there's been ongoing discussions with EverSource and their representatives that are trying to further awareness and opportunities to save money through reduced energy consumption.
So is the, is the $5,000 to make changes or is this more like $5,000 to get a consultation?
I think it's just, if we, if we show a good gesture in, in speaking with our employees, doing a walkthrough assessment, they'll give us the $5,000.
Okay.
There's not a lot of strings attached to this one. Again, I think it's really driven at just a goodwill gesture to, um, raise awareness and, and take a look at, at, uh, some low hanging fruit opportunities again where, um, some savings could be achieved. What we're not talking about is, you know, looking at, um, you know, infrastructure changes, you know, be it installation of solar, be it changing out pumps and motors where they'll be more energy efficient. That's, that's kind of just way off the radar in relation to what this money's trying to achieve.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any further discussion? Thanks. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. For item number 12, Alderman Weaver is recusing herself. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an agreement with the following agencies for sub-grantee services under the school readiness program as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Board of Education. The detail is provided in the agenda, I'll just name the, the programs, the ARC, Catholic Charities, Children's Community, Children's Village, Easter Seals, Nogtuck Valley, Muriel Moore, Team, Team at the Slocum School, and the Greater Waterbury YMCA for, uh, in, in Waterbury. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I have a question on this one as well.
Good evening, Janet Frannis, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Pretty good. Um, could you explain our relationship with these program areas? How often do we have someone from the school district going there on, on any kind of regular basis or how involved are we on a day-to-day level?
I can't give you, uh, you know, how many times a week?
Sure.
But we do employ someone who is over the school readiness sites as opposed to the Waterbury Public Schools pre-K sites. And so they are, they have to be approved by the school readiness council and they were, they are pretty closely monitored.
So, but there's a dedicated staff person who works specifically in these sites?
Yes, to oversee the, the, these sites and the, this program.
Yeah. When, when we, when we're looking at the total number of slots available, um, I mean, it seems like there's a, a pretty significant need for them. Is, is this arrangement with these organizations a long-term or are we, is there a, a more sustainable solution we're trying to get to?
These have been long-term, these are not new programs, but they have to renew every year.
Yeah.
They do sometimes open up more classrooms. I, I do know that the Y, I believe, opened up a couple more pre-K classrooms. We also have some school readiness sites in Waterbury Public Schools, you know, within our buildings, but these are, you know, the outside providers.
And, and these would work, because I know we have a, we're anticipating a problem with pre-K in this year, right? With the age change?
So far, we've, we've been okay. And so we tested a lot of those students that fell into that bubble and even students who weren't in a program. Two-thirds of them did move on to kindergarten. The students who didn't, we gave them a seat in pre-K. So they remained in pre-K, but so far we have not had problems filling seats.
Okay, great. Thank you. Alderman Zimmerman.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm just, I'm not familiar enough with the pre-K, um, programs and systems. So these locations are preschool locations, correct me if I'm, I'm trying to understand, where we pay to open them for parents? Is that what the grant amounts I'm looking at are?
The funding comes from several different grants. They're, they're their own entities, but they have to apply for the grants, they have to be accepted by the school readiness council. They're not technically Waterbury Public Schools, but we do, we work with them and they're, the children that are placed there feed into our school system.
Okay, and then do we, all right, they submit their own grant. So how does the Waterbury system get involved with this right now? Like, how is it coming to the Board of Alderman?
So, so there's a template and if they want to participate, they do have to submit the, the application and we will help with the grants. It's, it's all done together, but like I said, it has to go through the school readiness council. It's not something that one of these entities can just do on their own.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Item number 13. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a professional services agreement with Connecticut Junior Republic Association, Inc. in the not to exceed amount of $600,000 to provide safe program and school-based clinic program as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
I just have a comment. I'm just really excited that we have this finalized and we can get our counselors back in the schools and get everyone back in person again, so thank you.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. We'll pause for dramatic effect. Item number 14. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a college readiness and success agreement with College Board in the not to exceed amount of $101,305.76 to provide slash administer PSAT and SAT assessments for the 2024-2025 school year as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I have a couple of questions on this one as well.
Good evening again.
Welcome back. Um, could you, do you have a sense of how many students across our schools participate in PSAT or SAT assessments or trainings?
Sure. Um, every year, all of the 11th graders have, you know, our goal is to have, I believe it's a minimum of 95% of the students test. The state pays for that.
Yep.
What we pay for is the PSAT and SAT tests for the ninth, 10th, and 12th graders, basically because we believe that those practice sessions get students used to seeing the format of the test and how it feels and they're administered exactly like the SAT tests that count. And so this is something that we do every year and students, by the time they take it in at 11th grade, have multiple experiences.
Yep. But is it, is it offered, so it's offered in all 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grades across the city?
Yes.
But we don't have a, like a percentage tracked on how many students participate in them outside of the 11th graders? Like, do we know if I said, how many freshmen in the city are taking the PSAT? Do we know that number?
I could get those numbers for you, but it would be very high, it would be in the 90th percentiles. We run the day like an SAT day.
Okay.
And so they, if they're in school, they don't have somewhere else to go.
Yep.
That's, that's what they do.
Yeah. And is there, do we follow up to see, is there any kind of, like, sort of, I'm thinking like A/B testing, like students who are taking PSATs in Waterbury High Schools versus students that aren't? Do we know how effective the College Board? I mean, I know they administer the PSATs and the SATs, but how effective this training program is for our students?
I don't know if we have a number or a value that we could put to that, but we do track how students are doing. We know that we have to improve our SAT scores and we started something called the 530 and 480 Clubs. 530 is the minimum you need in math to be proficient, 480 is the minimum you need in English. And so we look at student scores and we look at the students who are very close to that and they, they opt to join this club and we provide after-school tutoring. And the data on that has shown that it has been highly effective.
Um, great, and this is open to all students, so even if a student was outside of that range or even within that range, they can still participate in the program?
Yes.
Yeah, great. Thank you, those are my questions. Any further discussion on item number 14? Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 15. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve Amendment Four to the Professional Services Agreement with Teaching Strategies LLC to provide early childhood preschool curriculum as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 16. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a letter of agreement with the State of Connecticut Department of Children and Families at no cost to provide a prevention services pilot program as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Item number 17. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a professional services agreement with Cormier Consulting LLC through June 30, 2027 in the not to exceed amount of $1,879,750 for onsite tier-one instructional support for non-commissioner network-funded schools and central office staff as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me. Hello again. Can you help me understand what a non-commissioner network-funded school is?
Sure. So we have.
I'm sorry, just your name again, I'm, I apologize.
Janet Frannis, Chief Academic Officer. We have four commissioner network schools. Those are turnaround schools. So they are Wallace Middle School, Westside Middle School, North End Middle School, and Willby High School. They started working with Dr. Cormier in 2020, and they have a separate contract. Those are the schools that have been working with Cormier Consulting longer. So the non-commissioner network schools are all of our other 24 schools and programs. So this contract applies to all of the other schools, elementary, middle, high, pre-K 8s, State Street, and Enlightenment.
Okay. And it's covered through these two grants, right? The Alliance and the Title I Grant?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just trying to understand what they do, right? So just reading into the record, eight coaches and consultants provide onsite Tier 1 instructional framework support. They'll produce 20 professional video, learning videos highlighting Waterbury Public School teachers engaging in instructional practices connected to the instructional framework. Services include executive leadership team support, classroom and behavior management support training, instructional data team training and support, instructional coach training and calibration, small group teacher training, full staff professional learning, and content supervisor training and calibration. Can you recap that and apply it to our schools? So what do they do when they come into this, those schools, all these schools that you're mentioning? Are they're onsite there, right, not at central office?
They are onsite there. They will occasionally meet with other groups of people. So part of this contract, they will be working with some content supervisors, but I think that's four days out of the entire contract. So I'm, I'm going to talk about the commissioner network schools because that's where I've really seen them in action, where they've been the longest. And so the coaches go in for a full day. They will sometimes, part of their focus is to work with leadership to build capacity to continue to lead this work. They have done full, full-day, part-day individual coaching with teachers. This is all about improving core instruction. Our data tells us, our test scores tell us that we have not been meeting the needs of students instructionally, therefore, we need to change instruction. And so what I've seen over the last few years, particularly with North End, when they first started working with North End, I know when I was in the classroom, I was very nervous if someone came into my room. It was very uncomfortable. They've gotten to the point where teachers welcome each other. They go on their own learning walks when they have a prep period. They agree to go into each other's classroom to observe, let's say you're a math teacher, to observe other math classes, to give each other feedback. They plan together. The culture, the climate has improved significantly in the schools where they've been working. The state also is involved because they are turnaround schools. And so the state also comes in, and they have their own measures. And they often invite us, people from central office, to come and do walkthroughs as well. I was a middle school teacher for 15 years. I have never seen a middle school the way, for example, North End has turned itself around. It's just, it's a phenomenal, it makes me want to go back into the classroom. And so they have focused on the turnaround schools, and then they, in a previous contract, they created a cohort of other schools, that would be Cohort 1. This contract kind of phases out, you know, it works with Cohort 1, Cohort 2. We have not begun work with Cohort 3. And so the reason for the three-year contract is to build capacity in the schools and then remove some of the support so that the schools are able to continue the work on their own. And that's why we're, he's focusing on training videos created by the staff because we are at a place where we can really go in and look at some of our, our classrooms and use those lessons as models for other teachers in the district.
Thank you. And how long have we been in, doing business with?
With the Commissioner Network School since 2020. But I believe, I, I first met Dr. Cormier when one of the content supervisors brought him in to do work in English Language Arts. I think it was in 2018.
Okay. Thank you for all that.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the explanation.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 18. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract between the City of Waterbury and J.A. Rosa Construction LLC in the amount of $4,498,368 for the purpose of constructing the North Main Street Pump Station as submitted by Rob Langenauer, Superintendent of Water, Bureau of Water. Can you get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Thanks for recognizing me. Hi, Mr. Langenauer, how are you? Hi.
How are you doing, Rob Langenauer, Superintendent of Water?
Would you be able to help me understand, what is the timeline for this project?
Timeline for construction?
Yes.
As soon as possible. So we still have to complete the application, the financial application, which has to go to bond council through the state drinking water, SRF. So as soon as that is done, we're anticipating a construction to start in the spring. And depending on lead time for materials, which has gotten, you know, much improved. So I would, I would, I would think that everything that I've learned about materials that we need for this project, spring construction.
And then what do we think the timeline is for construction to completion?
It has to be done within 545 days to meet the compliance of the funding. So the plan would be that if they started in the spring, should be done by the following spring, early summer, and to meet that 545 days so that we get the, you know, seventy-something percent.
And then was this in our budget, in our, in our capital improvement budget? Or under our budget for '25?
Yeah, the answer is yes. This started, this evolved since 2021 with ARPA. So this project came from that point when we thought everything was going to be, you know, for water and wastewater, and things changed. And then we had to regroup, go back to seek funding, and then waited for the state, who was very deliberate to issue the funds. Took a long time. And here we are today with a design that was done over two years ago that's now ready to, you know, for construction.
And do you think that design's still good?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Nothing's changed. This pump station is a prefabricated station, for the most part. Most of it's going to be built off-site, delivered to the site, and then put together. There is some water main work that will take place in the street that has to get done to improve, not to improve, but to extend some of the water main up, up a few hundred yards up to the site. But for the most part, it's, it's going to be, you know, kind of self-sufficient.
Great. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 19. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract for on-call HVAC services between the City of Waterbury and Suraco Mechanical Services, Inc. as submitted by David B. Simpson, Director, Department of Public Works. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Thanks for recognizing me. Hi, Mr. Simpson, how are you?
David Simpson, Director of Public Works.
I was just wondering, who, as of now, does this work?
Right, at this time, it is one contractor, it is Suraco Mechanical.
Okay. And then are, are those the people that we're going with, or we don't know yet?
In the contract that you're approving right this moment is with Suraco. It's a successor to the one, it was a three-year contract. There will be item 20, and there will be two more at your next Board of Aldermen.
Thank you.
I have a question as well, Director Simpson. Between these two items, 19 and 20, why are the rates so different? Why are we going from overtime hourly rate with Suraco at 150 to 190 with Tucker and hourly labor at 150 with Suraco to 205 with Tucker?
Excuse me, when we went out for the RFP, there were four qualified vendors that submitted. Each one of them brings a variety of disciplines and different rates to the table. And this gives us the ability, depending on the task that will be assigned, to make sure we choose the best vendor for the city.
So, then, sorry, but we're approving two contracts for on-call HVAC between two companies. So you're saying that you would then be able to pick, at a moment when we need on-call HVAC, which company to go with?
That's correct.
Okay. Unknown caller. And is the, the materials at vendor cost plus 15? That's in both of them. Is the plus 15 a standard?
Yes, it is. It's usually, it's usually anywhere between 12% and 20%.
Okay, so this is sort of a happy middle. And how often would you anticipate switching from a less expensive vendor to a more expensive vendor? What would be a scenario where you would rather go with a more expensive one?
In each one of the opportunities that will be done by a task order and then a purchase order, each one brings a different set of circumstances. Is it an immediate, you know? So, one of the scenarios that I said to people, okay, it's January 3rd, it's five below zero, and we don't have no heat in a facility. It's going to be paramount for us that who can respond quickest to put us back online. If it's 3 o'clock on a Friday afternoon and a general government building has no air conditioning, that may be a Monday morning response. And by doing it through a task order and then a purchase order, we can again choose the vendor that can best serve the city water.
Okay, sorry, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm just not grasping. So this, that would assume that at one point, perhaps, Suraco is unavailable, but Tucker would be. And so we would be forced to go with a more expensive contractor?
Alderman, I don't, I'm not sure that I would use the word forced. I think it gives us, each one of these will go out, and they'll be submitting proposals for each one of the tasks that we need to do. Looking at those proposals, we can determine again, is Tucker or Suraco the better vendor based on the circumstances that were?
Okay.
I will tell you that every one of the vendors, that's where I got away from the better vendor.
Sure.
Okay? Both of them in the request for proposal are highly qualified. And they each bring different disciplines that might make them better for a certain purpose.
Okay. All right, I think that's, that's more clear. I appreciate that. Any further discussion on item number 19? Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 20. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract for on-call HVAC services between the City of Water and Tucker Mechanical, Inc. as submitted by David B. Simpson, Director, Department of Public Works. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 21. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve Amendment Number 1 to an engineering services agreement between the City of Waterbury and O&amp;S Associates, Inc., Doing Business As Orlando and Sammy Associates, Inc. as submitted by Salvatore Di Porizio, Project Manager, Engineering Department. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 22. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a construction contract for the Mohawk Street Drainage Improvements between the City of Waterbury and Gerber Construction, Inc. in the amount of $154,490 as submitted by Roy E. Kavanaugh, P.E., City Engineer, Engineering Department. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 23. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a construction contract between the City of Waterbury and Infrastructure Repair Service LLC in the amount of $302,131 as submitted by Salvatore Di Porizio, Project Manager, Engineering Department. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me. Hi, Mr. Kavanaugh, how are you?
Roy Kavanaugh, City Engineer.
I'm trying to understand the, the timeline for this, like, the water infiltration into the, the police offices in the Formal Travel Center. Do you know when that might be solved? That, that side of the project?
Repeat the question, please.
Yeah, so for, let me find it. We had, under the proposed contract, they're going to focus on three main areas which need attention. Water infiltration into the Waterbury Police Department offices over Formal Travel Center, and then we call out the repairs to the stairwell at the end of Cottage Place and structural issues on a beam supporting a portion of the top parking deck. When do we expect this to be complete?
O&amp;S did a preliminary inspection and report of the whole garage last year. As part of that, we prioritize the repairs required. The total project is north of $10 million. So what we did is we put together a list of priority repairs. Number one, to make it safe, and number two, to make the offices not vulnerable to water infiltration. And this, what they call the priority repairs, is what we need to do as a first step to ensure the longevity and safety of the garage. The big thing is the, the cracked beam, the fifth floor of the parking garage. We can't really use it because of the, the beam isn't really safe. It's deteriorating significantly. The deck on top of it's deteriorating. There's significant repairs that have to be done to the stairs going up between all five of the levels, and the fifth is the water infiltration, which we want to address so we don't jeopardize all of the recent repairs in the office there. So that's kind of the genesis of the whole project and the purpose of it.
And do we expect it to be completed, like, within a year? Like, what is a reasonable time for those three things to be? Do they have their own timing, or?
Well, the, the critical element of this is the slab deck repairs. They have to be done when the surface temperature is 40 degrees and rising, which is why we're in hurry to get it done this, this fall before the adverse weather sets in. If we don't make the window, the contractors agreed to hold the price till next spring. But we're hoping not to, we're hoping to prevent further deterioration of both the beam and the deck. So that's kind of like Plan B right now.
And do we know how to cure the water infiltration that's happening in the police department offices?
Yeah, we've seen evidence of that, and we're pretty confident, given the deteriorated deck, if we re-coat it, if we remove the bad section, surface section, and re-coat it, we are confident we can stop it, between that and caulking some of the joints.
And is that something that's going to be completed in this year?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, it's weather dependent, 40 degrees and rising.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Any abstentions? Motion passes. That is all for the Intergovernmental Committee. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Okay, and with that, we will return to the regular order of business. Item number one is on consent to approve. Item number two is on consent to approve of public hearing set for October 21st, 2024 at 5:45 in these chambers. Item three is on consent to approve. Items four and items five are receiving placed on file. Item six is on consent to approve. Items seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23 are all on consent to approve. Item number 24 is receiving placed on file. Item number 25 is receiving placed on file. An unfinished business, item number one is on consent to approve. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion with, with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
Alder-
Second.
Motion made in second. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Alderman Mosley.
Yeah, I'd like to remove item number six from the consent calendar.
Alderman Weaver.
Item 12?
I, remove item number 12.
12, yeah.
Yes, okay. So the motion now on the floor is to approve the consent calendar as read minus items number six and 12. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent calendar as, as read is approved minus items number six and 12. With respect to item number six, we'll give Alderman Mosley a motion, a second to leave. Item number six is requesting approval of a budget transfer for capital improvements and other funds for FYI 24 within the city's general fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $3,825,000. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item six.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it. The motion carries. The transfer, the approval of the transfer is approved. Please let the record show for item number six, that Alderman Mosley recused himself. Alderman Marti, Alderman Weaver, can you please send Alderman Mosley back in? Okay, item number 12 is requesting approvals subject to the Board of Alderman and anticipate approval at regular meeting of 9/19/2024 of an agreement with the following agencies for sub-grantee services under the School Readiness Program to wit. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item 12.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it. The motion carries. Okay, with respect to standing, the Chair would recognize Alderman Michael Salvio, the Chair of the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $9,638.49, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve the refunds as read.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Dorso, seconded by Alderman Mosley. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it. The motion carries, and the refunds are approved. That is our business for the evening. Is there, yes, Alderman Mosley?
Yes, thank you for recognition, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to state for the record my rationale for abstaining from item six. Currently serve as the Treasurer for the Waterbury Promises Board.
Thank you. Anything other for the good of your order? Alderman Alsop?
Yes, I'm going to ask my perpetual questions. What are we doing about the tax-exempt property and what's going on with Sacred Heart? I haven't had any answers in a couple of months. I'm getting a little bit anxious.
Yes, I have reached out-
We've had more than enough time to have answers.
Yep, I have reached out to Michael Blank, who is here, who's present, knows that you are waiting for that report, and we will get it to you as, as soon as possible to you, okay? We are aware of it.
Thank you.
Anything else? Alderman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. President. I have two items. The first item is just to remind everyone that the Waterbury Neighborhood Council Awards Dinner is October 10th at the Bella Vista, is that right? Okay. My dad's being honored, so I'm kind of biased here, but I just want to remind everybody of that. And my second is a request, if we can, I've heard some feedback coming from, I think it was a Wetlands Commission meeting concerning our agreement with Blue Water and Amazon coming in and the WDC, and I'm wondering if you guys, the WDC can come in and maybe just give us an update on like what's going on, feedback you've heard, some answers to popular questions, like anything like that, because it's been a while since we've kind of seen an update from-
Sure, so what, what we'll do is we'll, I'll reach out to the mayor, obviously, and obviously see what he, he says, and if it's, if it's something that we all would want to do, we'll, we'll take care of it and get it, get it done for you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything further? Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, real quick, thank you again for being recognized. So, I do, I do know, and as most people are aware, there has been an issue, and it's been documented in our local paper regarding Abbott Terrace, and I do know that there is currently investigation from DPH. I was wondering if we're able to, as a, as a body, either invite the management to one of our meetings to report out on their progress with fixing some of the issues, or if we, as a body, can tour the facility with management to get a sense of the challenges that they're facing at Abbott Terrace.
Sure, so again, I'll defer to Mayor Bernuski. He'll obviously make that decision. What we do have to be careful is if we go as a group, you know, to a place like that, we would have to invite the public, and we consider that a meeting, so we have to be very careful. If we're invited, it, it changes it up, but I'll, again, talk to Mayor Bernuski and see what his feelings are about it, okay?
Thank you.
Anything else for the good of your order? Alderman Zimmerman?
Sorry for calling on me again, but I do want to remind everyone about the, this weekend coming up, because I don't think we've mentioned it enough. So Saturday is Waterbury's 350th anniversary, right?
No, Friday. Friday.
Sorry, sorry. Thank you. Trying to read here, but I'm getting old and I need glasses. All right, so Friday, September 27th is our 350th anniversary, Waterbury moving forward, hurrah. We have food trucks, family games, lots of local music happening on the green, and then Saturday, September 28th, 11 a.m. to 7 p.m. So 11 a.m. starts the gathering parade, which includes all of our cultures all over Waterbury. It's super awesome. And then in Library Park, there's a big festival that happens, a cultural fair. So, thank you.
Alderman Taggely.
Nope.
And I had the same thing, so Alderman Zimmerman stole our thunder, so with that, can we get, Alderman Alsop?
One thing, we had a presentation about the report about the police department. I took the time today to go to the communications center. I met with Dave Martin and got a tour, and we sat for probably a good hour, hatching through some of the nuances of the report and different things. I would recommend to my fellow Alderman to take that time to go down there, learn a little bit about it. Some of the things I had my eyes opened a little wider when you hear both sides of a story, it's usually the fifth version of the story that comes out right, but it's good to hear more than one thing going on, and I, I was, I want to say, optimistic by the changes that they have already put in place, and optimistic of the attitude of Mr. Martin and the people, that they're going to continue to try to improve. You know, in my negative way of doing things, I said, I'll give you all the support you need, and then I'm going to pull a plug on you if you don't do your job, period. You know, I just want them to do the job right. But I'm optimistic that they are progressing. They admitted what faults they had, they showed me what was going on, why, he explained a few of the different things that the way they were, then, then they were explained to us. I strongly suggest that everybody takes the time to go and look, because in the future, if things aren't really improved a lot, I for one will be calling for changes, and if they do improve a lot, I will be supporting them. So right now, I just want to say that, you know, my attitude towards them has changed a lot, but I'm still cautiously optimistic.
Thank you. Alderman Rinaldi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder that October 2nd, 7 p.m. in these chambers, the Inlet Wetland Commission is having a public hearing on the Blue Water Group, Amazon Facility, so that's at 7 o'clock in these chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rinaldi, can you say that again, please, for one or the other Alderman?
It's on Wednesday, October 2nd, 7 p.m. in the chambers, Inlet Wetland Committee, public hearing.
Thank you. Alderman Zimmerman.
I know. I'm going to send out an email to the board, because I want to go, and I have an email from Mr. Martin about going down and seeing that communications center, so let's see if anyone else, if anyone else wants to come, we can go down as a, as a team and like, so he doesn't have to repeat himself again.
Yeah, again, as we go down as a, as we go for a team, though, it, it presents a, a problem for us, because we, we actually create a quorum, and we, and we form a meeting where the public would have to come in too, so maybe something, you know, that you could do amongst, I know that he did reach out to me to reach out to you three, Republican Alderman, but yeah.
All right, thank you.
So it's something you could do on your own, okay?
Appreciate it, yep.
Sure. Anything else? Alderman Dorso?
Sure? Motion to adjourn.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Second.
We are adjourned.[1683.41]